Related to that, they are looking at doing some improvements to Old Road, which were initially discussed back when we did the A and R for lots and the junior faculty units. So that will, that's longer range, but that will be coming before the board at some point. And they're also doing an expansion of the Student Center on Middle Road. And that also will require site plan review because it's over 2,000 square feet of additional space. Plus they're putting in patio, they're enclosing, there's an outdoor courtyard now, which they'll be enclosing. And they'll be, I guess using the existing parking lot instead of Middle Road now for day student drop off. So it'll be both expansion of the building and site improvements that will come before the board for site plan review. I think that, not quite, I don't quite remember what the timeframe is on that. It's all, everything is funded, kind of.
An ambitious plan.
They do. I've done a calendar of regular meeting dates for the first six months of this year, so I thought I would just pan that out. So everybody can plan, and if there are any that seem like they're problematic, then we can take a look at those and adjust as we need to. Fair, it looks like, I don't know if you all remember the A and R that the board endorsed recently for the 277 High Road property down across from Lower Green. And there was a question on that, about the proximity of the structures to High Road. It doesn't need the front yard setback, and our town council's opinion has been that that would require zoning relief. The applicant's position is that it doesn't. So I think there will be some follow-up from them on that, but no, nothing required from the board as far as I know. So that's all I have for my town plan report tonight.
Okay, well, thank you.
You're welcome. Call one yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we could, I'm not sure that we really have anything to discuss on zoning tonight.
Well, I'm not sure we have much to discuss, that could happen in a couple of minutes.
Right.
I have been still doing my wireless stuff.
Okay, alright, so we can come back to that.
Yeah, actually Martha, I was hoping you might find a half hour for me sometime between now and when we do the workshop. Week from Friday, I do go over the marijuana, I just want to make sure I understand the issues.
That'd be great, I'd love to.
Yeah.
Yeah, so let's touch base and see what works for you. That'd be perfect. New isn't reports?
It's been a holiday.
Well, we did have the NVPC meeting on the tw- what was it?
Before Christmas.
Right before Christmas, right.
How, did you wear a sweater?
I did not have an open sweater.
You did not?
But there were people there who did have open sweaters. So I'm gonna have to find one for next year, and if you can Google it, I will. But it was, it was a good meeting, it was actually, you know, they met an hour ahead of time, just for your Christmas party, and it was well attended. Main agenda, I had been doing a spotlight on the different communities that they serve. The September 20th was Newbury, then they did West Newbury, and Havel was this time. So it's just really interesting to see what they're doing in each of the communities, and how it changes for each community. You know, Havel's very much an urban environment, so it's really much more urban focused for us. They're, you know, doing a lot of work on Marsh, Sandy Brandt and Peter Fitton and all of that kind of stuff. So it's just, you know, they kind of tailor their services to the community, each community. And Karen did say again that we were the first to get our housing production plan approved, which was nice. So.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome. And the ZBA, I know they, they had one thing at the end of December before Christmas, but I think most of it was used, was continued to January 31st. So I think you can do it now.
I don't think we'll do it now.
No. Alright, now is there anyone here, or do we just go by the letter of their request for?
There is nobody here representing the applicant, so we just have the letter to continue.
I assume?
Till the 16th, January 16th. So the board will need to vote to, you should probably read the letter, and then vote to accept the request and set the date and time certain.
Okay, so we have a letter from the applicant, Charing Cross Realty Trust for the project at 170 Orchard Street, Newbury, map par 20, parcel 43A. Project is an open space residential development, they call it Forge Village. And it says, "Dear Planning Board Members, Charing Cross Realty Trust hereby requests a continuance of the Planning Board's public hearing for the above referenced project from tonight, January 2nd to January 16th, to afford it more time to address comments and questions from board members and the board's peer review engineer. Thank you sincerely, Jeffrey L. Prox." So, given that, I guess we need a motion to continue to the 16th on, to the 16th at 7:10?
And so move seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
So I did request that they get materials to us by the 10th, so that I can distribute it to you all for review.
Thank you. That'd be a good idea.
So we'll see if we get it or not.
Right. Okay, so next, we have Arthur Costanas, 105 High Road.
Yes.
Okay.
Aye.
Come on up, come on up.
Senator Wees.
Thanks Tom, we'll look at it.
That just leaves us. Can I put this on?
Yeah.
That should.
Yeah, that's what it's there for.
Can you see that?
I see.
Hi, boy.
Thank you, Senator Wees.
Thanks, I'm Arthur Costanas.
Do you want to come up?
I'm sorry, we're not that formal, we're here informally.
That's fine.
This is 105, we currently live there, we've lived there several years. There's a house here, and a barn, carriage house right here. This is High Road right here, tenement parking lot right across the street from Rev. Property is this piece, and this piece. It's exactly 16.41 acres, it's been surveyed since the last, but not on, just to get an existing conditions. We're personally trying to solve a problem we have, where we have these two structures. We have, since we bought it in 2006, we moved here in 2006. We have this carriage house, and a new house that we just built here. We have two structures on the same lot, and we've tried different thought processes, how to address that issue. And something came up in our mind recently with regard to maybe just splitting the lot into two lots, and creating two separate lots, the two structures in there. And for our purposes, it would work great, because we want to stay in the carriage house, and then sell this house in the front. And we would favor our home being the bigger lot, if you will, and we would keep that, just like it is. So we're just kind of exploring the thought process of that, and if it would be a reasonable request for the town and the board. And that's really kind of the purpose we're here, to just kind of get an informal feedback, if it makes any sense, or as opposed to something else could be done, or a different way of addressing it. I think it could be done within the constraints, with waivers and requests for waivers. It's not that far out of the picture, there are some issues with the tightness of. Oops, for me, I can't hear upstairs. Again, this is not an engineered plan in the sense that it's something that we should be critiquing, it's just more of a concept at this point. It's tight up here, but we have all this land that we kind of like to use it for something, more than just what it is. And you know, this isn't a big use, so we're just kind of shifting the existing building that's here. We would just be kind of shifting, there's a barn, we have a big barn up here in the field, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
There's a large barn right here in the field. This front piece is all beautiful land, it's a field, and next door is golf property, which is Colby's farm, it has Colby family, and they use the front 25 for hay, and the back 25 is just what it, just like this piece is. But it seemed, you know, we would effectively be moving that structure to somewhere in this area, right in this area, depending on the configuration of the paper street, or whatever needs to be done to get there. But the concept is just get these two guys split up and create a smaller lot for that house, and a bigger lot that just stays like this in perpetuity for us. And we're just wondering, not so much from a design standpoint, engineering, because we're just kind of here to talk to you guys as people, and see if it makes any sense to anybody, or if we're, you know, dreamers or whatever, you know? It's really a purpose, and I guess we can talk about it. The barn is, it's an old barn, 1898, E.W. Randall built it. When we bought it, it was basically falling down, and I don't know, I kind of got into it and renovated it, and brought it back to life, it's kind of cool, and I don't want it to go away. I like it so much, I'd like to keep it for us.
How many bedrooms are in it?
One right now.
How many is it designed for, with your rehab?
If I were to rehab it, I would make it three bedrooms. It could have come, it's unconventional, it's open right now, but it could be reconfigured. It's, some of its unfinished is an apartment within the barn. It's 2,900 square feet, it's a big volume of structure. But within that space, about a third of it's used, and it has like a one bedroom, but it's a huge bedroom, it's like a.
So even the loft area, or is that?
Yeah, well, above the loft, because it's actually three floors. I should have brought pictures, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't. But that structure could be a really neat house. And we actually lived in it as is, but as it is now, from a few years till we built that farmhouse. And I think it has real potential to be a really nice, comfortable, not the most conventional house supposed to be in, but it's really cool. I mean, it has the old floors on the first floor. We used all the wood from when we took down the original house that was in front, and used all that wood to build out the inside of the barn. Anybody's welcome to come take a look at any time, but we kind of want, we want to keep that, is what I'm suggesting. And we're just trying to figure out what to do with it.
But you do have a few hurdles.
We do, yeah, we do.
I'm a little bit confused in the history, so is it the barn that you want to move?
Correct.
Or is there a third structure on the property?
There is a third structure, but that would just go away.
Okay, so.
The existing barn would go away. I'm sorry, let's get the terminology right. I apologize. That's what, there is, there is a barn, a real full fledged barn right there.
Okay, that's not where you're living, though?
No, we're, we're living here.
Okay.
We were living here, we moved, built this, moved here, this is a full-fledged barn.
So i- if you get your subdivision, which, which building are you going to be living in? Down, and then you're gonna move that up by the barn somewhere?
Somewhere up here.
Okay.
And probably, probab- probably you'd want to take that down, because somewhere in that area is, it'd be nice if we didn't have to, but, because it's a good barn, that's a full-fledged barn. I mean, it's an open structure.
We have somebody that will take that barn down for you.
I'm still confused, though, is that the barn you're talking about has the apartment?
No.
That we call the?
Carriage house. Previously, this was a barn, it was literally used, well, it was a barn, it was built as a barn in 1898 by E.W. Randall, who still has the signature of the builder in the barn, actually. And it was used as such for many years, this was apple orchard out here. They used to bring the apples up, would pack them in here, and they used to weigh in Boston. And he set up some really cool stuff in the barn, like memorabilia and things like that. And then over time, it developed, and they had horse stable, there were horse stalls in the barn, there were eight stalls here, you know, some more underneath, because there's another lower level.
This is actually just cow barn and chickens, they raise chickens and like some chickens and their cows.
So, again, you just, I just want to make sure I have it straight. So you bought the property in Osens?
Correct.
Right, and you were living in what we'll call a carriage house?
Yes.
No, it was a mess when we, when we first bought this property, it was an awful mess.
Oh, we did live there.
This was in complete disrepair, and so was the house, it was, this and this were there, but they were both in terrible disrepair.
Right, and you actually took the existing house down to the studs, the studs were left?
Down to the ground. We left three walls, because we had to, because of substantial renovation, and we just encapsulated those. But we basically, it's brand new, the house is brand new through substantial renovation, which was kind of a pain in the neck, because it would have been a lot easier. But there was an issue with the setback to High Road.
Okay, then that was actually one of my questions, because it scales at about 19 feet or something?
It's like 20, it's like 19, it's close, it's not, it's close.
But it's not, it's not quite 20, which is what's required.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
You know what, I don't think I ever put a pic, I don't know if I, let's assume that, I don't even remember, but for some reason, we were concerned about that. If we went with a substanti- I'm going back 11 years, 12 years, with a substantial renovation permit with the building department, we were able to remove, and in purview of the building inspector, a substantial amount of the building can be removed, and just enough can be left to allow you to proceed.
So that you can maintain the footprint.
You, you got, yes, you have to maintain the footprint, which we did.
Right, but is it your concern, Martha, that if there's a, there's a subdivision, that they're gonna create a non-grandfather, non-conformity?
That, that is a concern that I have.
That, which is along with the same issue with the Indian, I would talk about it, I think, right?
Right, right, because you're creating a new law.
Oh, because this doesn't have a setback, financially?
Right.
That you might be losing your, your grandfather status for the property, so it's something you'd want to be very careful about.
Right, so that you might need to go for zoning relief.
I see. Yeah, I don't think that has 20 feet, which I'm pretty sure.
It doesn't scale at 20 feet, so that's what, when I started looking at what you gave me.
I don't think it does, because that's why we did renovation that, as opposed to a new permit, or new construction, which we could have relocated at that point.
Right, but, but the issue being, now that you create?
Yeah, we're creating a non-conforming use.
You may be, I don't know, apparently that's up for debate, at least as far as that A and R goes anyway.
Right, and council's opinion is that that's, that's what happens. And so, so as part of your process, if you go forward with this, you may need to get relief from the zoning board of appeals for that existing footprint and the non-conformity in the front yard setback.
You're creating your own problem.
You are.
Well, you, what, what's your problem right now? Did you have two dwellings on the same lot, is that, is that the problem?
That's part of it.
It's an issue, yes, it was, it's been an issue, but there's language in the zoning bylaw that allows that to happen currently in town through the ZBA, the ZBA's opinion. And we're before the ZBA right now, we're just on hold right now, because this thought process, and other thought processes came up, but this seemed like a, initially, it seemed like a fairly direct thing in terms of not changing anything, in terms of density, or doing anything different than what's here. But as you know, everything's complicated with the rules and the regulations.
So was it your expectation, then, that you would be able to use both dwellings on that lot when you went forward with the reconstruction of the main house?
Well, it was an open issue, it's a, you know, at that time, up until, what did, does anybody, I don't know when the zoning changed, but zoning recently, in the last couple of years, adopted some language to address multiple dwellings on the same lot.
Well, I think, I think you're referring to the accessory apartment by law?
Yes, exactly.
Right, and the issue here is that there's too much, it's too large to fit within the accessory apartment.
We're at the 130.
That's greater than 130, great.
But I guess what I was trying to get at, were you always expecting to use both of these dwellings? Or was it originally your intention to take the carriage house down, or to dis, to abandon it as a residential use at some point, and live in the main house?
We, we never wanted to abandon it, it became our baby, the barn actually, it came a lot more work than I thought it could, but it did. I don't want it to go away, is the bottom line, and I don't think it's the right thing to do, to make it go away. We had a situation a couple of years ago down the street here, where a barn went away, and I don't want that to happen. It just, you know, I don't want, I can keep it, and it just, I have to fit somewhere in the world of the rules that are out there, and I don't know where to fit, I'm like, we're the hybrid, because we are greater than 1,000 square feet. Not that that can't maybe be solved, that's on the table as a discussion issue with the zoning board of appeals right now, whereas we have a whole, it's a unique situation, because that's not really what the land, the land can ever address a situation like this in the town yet. We're kind of the first one. We have a 2,900 square foot structure, within that structure, there is a 1,000 square foot apartment, if you will, or dwelling, or an in-law apartment. But there's an issue or concern, you know, how do you, what is that? Is it 2,900 square feet, or is it 1,000? And if it's 1,000, right now, we're kind of toying with the idea, not toying, but we're addressing the issue of how to make habitable space and non-habitable space in the same building. I guess that's what the zoning board's for, is to look at the case by case, but that is the issue with the zoning board. But then this thought came up, you know, maybe, maybe two lots, solving it that way. But I had contemplated that, that is a good, very good point. We'd be creating a non-conforming situation there by creating a lot for that. And I think that that would be not a productive exercise, because we're making the problem by making this subdivision, therefore.
That might be a nonstarter for you right there.
It's not a really brilliant idea, to create your own problem, if you will. We're just trying to solve, we're not, just exploring. We've got this pinch point up here, that's the other problem, you know, we've got irregular things, you know, a lot of the old houses are pretty close to the street.
Wasn't any reason they couldn't seek relief from the ZBA for that as well?
No, you could ask her.
We could ask, but we'd be creating our own problem, and we wouldn't, it's not prudent, I don't think, on their part.
Well, I can ask her, depends on which way she wants to go.
Yeah, and really, I, I mean, it's, it's probably, in a sense, not our business, but it, you might be guided by what your long-term plans are here. I mean, if what you're looking for is an in-law situation or rental property, then you probably want to go to the ZBA, because that's the only, you know, you can keep them. If you can, if you're successful, you've got both the structures on the same lot. If what you're looking to do is, is sell one of these, you know, as a house lot, then you really have to go through subdivision control, you know?
Well, for us, the best, for us personally, our best option is the sale of this property. That's what we would like to facilitate. But we'd like, if, you know, personally, we'd like to stay on this, stay on the property. Selfishly, that is our favorite, that is our personal.
Not selfish, it's a sound decision, you know?
Well, you know, we have, we have a 17-year-old, and a lot of things change in life, and he needs to be here, and. He may be getting married in the near future, who knows, he's got a girlfriend, and yada, yada, and it happens real quick. And, you know, this would be a good place maybe for him to grow up to, with his, you know, just bottom line. You know, I don't, not that our personal stuff is of interest to you, but that's the truth. So our favorite solution would be something like this, where we, you know, could sell off the house that we built, and end up with us on our property, you know, in a good financial position. You know, because the sale of that would basically pay off if mortgages are issued, like be mortgage-free and that type of thing, but that's selfish.
Yes, the property, I think I understand the property is in chapter 61A.
It is.
And so that would be a consideration in this discussion of subdividing, because you're changing the use. If you would be creating a new house lot on the property, it would no longer be agricultural. I don't, I don't know, what, what's the current use of the back of the property now?
Here?
Yeah, what qualify, what, what use qualifies it for chapter 61A?
Woodlot in here. Up until recently, livestock, we did have cows for some time, we were the reluctant farmers.
Do you know, and this might be a better question for Martha, is the entire property in 61A, or is the minimum house lot size carved out of that?
It's usually the acres carved out.
If acre is carved out, if you have, minimum five acres, then the first acre is taken out, and then it's the rest.
Because that's your residential use, and then the back?
Correct, you pay your real estate taxes according on that, just like any other property account. Then the remainder of the land is taxed at a lower rate based on farming.
So you might, to Kristen's point, I guess you might lose that 61A exemption if you create another residential use back there, or at least for some part of it anyway. Probably not a.
It would probably have to be addressed, if the town was willing, they could allow us, because, you know, just under this concept, if you will, if we kept 14 acres, about 14 and a half acres, 14 acres, let's say, we still would certainly qualify for 61A, and we could keep that if the town allows. And we still have, we'd still have a nice place to raise chickens or cows, not cows, but per se. We could have an agricultural use, which we probably would, on some, in some way.
Yeah, that will, I guess you work out with the assessments, but.
That's right, it's.
Yeah, I have a question for council as well. I mean, if, if they create a one-acre lot with the existing house, and that's already the acre that's excluded, and they create a new lot and exclude an acre for that house lot, and the remainder stays in 61A, I don't know, actually, if that triggers the process or not.
You're saying that you would have to reconfigure the?
You'd have to reconfigure, but I don't know.
Yeah, but I, I'm not sure, but given this, I'm not sure that just an acre here or an acre there is gonna fly. I think you might have to reconfigure the whole front, well, at least this part, I would think, would not qualify quite clearly. But maybe the rest still would.
No, I think you're right.
But it's just, yeah, it's just another thing to think about, something you're gonna have to deal with. But I think Larry has, you kind of, you know, you need to kind of figure out which, which, you know, is the best option for you, and then kind of go at it that way.
What, can I ask you, there's a, your plan, there's a line here, edge of right of way, is there a?
There is a right way, there is.
Is it just some other property owner to get to backline, is that what it is?
This, originally, as you can see in this photo, see this ring? This oval, this was no, this was a sulky track. The Sullivan brothers, I believe, originally had it as a sulky track. And it's still there, the bed of special clients and everything is still there. When the brothers split this property in its entirety, in this. When the brothers split this property in its entirety, and this property, which is only my neighbor Catherine O'Brien, it's right here, and it goes back and kicks over, just like this does. The property was split, and when the property was split, right down that property line, each side is seven feet, there's a fourteen-foot right-of-way.
Including you?
We have seven feet on our side of the property, Catherine has seven feet.
Because what I'm thinking frankly is, you are so tight here, that if you could pick up another seven feet by use of that right-of-way, might help me out. Because if you don't mind, I mean, just from my two cents worth, a couple of things that just struck me right away, is, you know, you're not only asking, would have to be asking for waiver of the subdivision, the construction of a subdivision road, but you're not, you're not even able to meet the minimum requirements for a common driveway, and that may be a problem. The other issue is, you know, you've got to provide some sort of turnaround that's going to satisfy public safety, the fire department in particular. You know, so I don't know that, and I, I hear what you said earlier, that this is just sort of an idea, this isn't a final engineered plan, but it's problematic, I think.
It's tight, that's, you know, there's no.
It is tight, it is tight.
You said there is a fence, I was driving by the other day, there is a fence that's actually going down the property line.
There is, Catherine put up a fence prior to our ownership. I don't know, there was, she didn't get along, our neighbor didn't get along with the previous owner. And she put up a fence right down the property line.
All the way down.
Which I've never challenged, which probably could, because you can do that in an easement, but.
Because I'm assuming it might have been a hay and driftway or something at some point.
It was just a spray fence.
Right, but the right-of-way itself may have been a hay and driftway, get back to back.
It was absolutely, it was a fourteen-foot right-of-way, allowing equipment or whatever needs to get back there, back there. That's, I'm sure that's the intent.
You'd have to look at the language granting the right-of-way, but it's, it's possible, I said seven feet earlier, but if, if both you and your neighbor in common have the right to use the right-of-way, then maybe you pick up fourteen feet. But you gotta look and see what sort of restrictions are placed on it. You know, I don't know what the right-of-way can be used for, if it's just general, you know, access purposes, or if it's limited to certain types of equipment, you know, that's something you need legal advice on. But it, it might give you a little bit more room up here.
But I don't think I can use that, I was.
Well, again, it depends on who, who, who holds the right-of-way, you know?
Well, it runs to both properties.
So you, you could potentially, you know?
But I don't own the land, if you will.
Well, but that's what an easement is, it gives you the right of, of access over someone else's property. But again, you've got to look at see who, to see who holds the easement, who's benefited by the easement. If it's both properties and the easement's for unrestricted access, then you might have something there, you know? Give you a little bit more room to work with.
The language, the registry or?
Yes, yeah, yeah, you'd have, you'd have to track that down, probably from one of the.
The both properties.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. You have to see who granted the easement, and who the easement was granted to, and what purpose the easement is for, if there are any limitations on it. You know, I mean, can you go in and pave it, maybe, maybe not, I don't know, you know? But you've got, you've got a lot to think about, but probably, well, not probably, but the big issue is going to be creating that non-conformity, the frontage, non-conformity, if you go subdivision control.
No matter what we do, that becomes the gorilla in the room, if you will. Irrespective of all of that logistical figuring, you know, right off the bat, I'm creating a problem that is my own manufacture.
Yeah, and, and the setback, Martha, has to be from the edge of the, the public right-of-way, not the edge of the pavement, correct? So the, the public right-of-way is probably wider than the actual pavement on high street.
Yeah, absolutely.
Probably big, it's a road, right, it's a state road.
It's a state road, I'm not sure, I'm not sure what it is.
I don't know either, but.
You know, the, the argument that's been being made in the other cases, that there is a front yard setback with other structures, it's already been established, but we don't know how that's going to work out, so all we can go on is what council has told us so far.
Wait, say that again, if you don't mind, I'm sorry.
There's, there's an argument that if there's a front yard setback that's already established by other structures, so, you know, if yours isn't the only one, there may be an argument to be made to allow the non-conformity that you have, but.
Through ZBA?
Through, yeah, I would say, I mean, you'd certainly want to get relief, I think. But you could potentially make a viable argument.
Sure.
Obviously, your neighbor on this side is further back than you are, but I don't know what's over there. Yeah, Catherine's further back.
Yeah, Catherine's further back too, I think, actually, the. Excerpt from my mouth shows.
Do you have any consult with an engineer or anything?
I have.
You have?
Yes, just with regard to this concept?
Yeah.
And just initially, and it was an awful fight, because it was over the past couple of weeks. Martha was wonderful enough to meet with us informally a couple of times, and be patient with our craziness, but.
So who did the planning, did you do it?
No, no.
Oh, oh.
It was the, yeah.
Wait, wait.
Wait, wait, yeah, okay. But we do have an engineer, but he's just got back from vacation, not the holidays, if you will. And he's on, he's prepared to move forward with a real plan, if you will. This was just for talking about what we're talking about.
Well, I'm sure they had to look up the deeds here, so they probably have the information, can provide you with that information of who holds the easement. If you're trying to save money, you're already paying this guy.
Right, well, I, I'm fairly familiar with it, I don't want to shoot myself in the foot. I know the easement runs to both properties, and it does not speak to anything about what it's used for or anything of that nature.
Does it say who gets to use it? Just you two?
These two, yeah, that's it.
Wynton? Oh, yeah, okay.
This.
You and, you and your neighbor?
Catherine and this, these two properties. But when we met with our engineer, the actual engineer, the civil engineer, I wish I had the plan with me, he was very, he was very specific about that issue. That's, I, I don't want to, I'll be very frank, he was, remember we talked about that with Al, Al Callum? Because I thought, I, I'm optimistic, I'll throw anything out there and try. And I said, well, can't we use that easement? Because it was very tight here. And he said, you can't, because you don't own the property. How can, how can I make a road over a property you don't own? In other words, I can't present that to the board. But he did have a thought, but that got complicated too. He was, he had suggested, he did actually, he did a drawing for us, he took this property line, and he suggested that he shifts it a little bit. He takes a pivot point, just say here on the property line, and you shift it, so that it opens up about ten feet up here. And by the time you get back here, it's like twenty feet on our property. And then talk to Catherine and see if she would be interested in.
Doing a land exchange.
You know, kind of a two-for-one, you get.
Oh, actually, yeah.
And she's actually got a problem back, not a problem, but she's always had an issue back here, it's very tight for her back here, where her barn is. You know, on any given day, you know, it's hard to predict what someone's wants, or, but, you know, it was an idea, because that opened up a little bit of space here with regard to this pitch point. And it did may have some value to me, we talked, but it gets complicated.
Yeah.
Everything gets complicated.
Right, but again, if, if you're changing the lot lines, there's potentially, you could use, lose the grandfathered status of the existing house because of the non-conformity with the front yard setback. Because right now, it's grandfathered as it is, and again, when we spoke, I hadn't looked at that part of it, so I didn't, you know, didn't realize that, that you were potentially non-conforming in your front yard setback.
Right.
So once you make any change to the lot lines, you are potentially.
I'm almost, I'm ninety, I'm a hundred percent certain, because that's what drove us to do the renovations, potential renovation. That methodology, as opposed to pulling in a permit.
You had, you had to leave the walls a place in order to, so you wouldn't.
It's in the building inspector's purview at the time. I think it can be, whatever the building inspector feels is proper. In this particular case, we left the, this wall, this wall, and this wall of the old house intact. And we basically encapsulated that with new framing. And now, that was sufficient enough under the language of substantial renovation. It was acceptable to the building inspector, Sam Joll, and he allowed that.
So you have a septic vent here, is this where your septic system is?
Septic for the house, correct, is, yes, exactly.
Is where?
Here, right in this area, right here.
So your road is going to be right next to your vent?
Right next to it. We've got, we could probably sneak the sixteen feet in, but that's it. And then there's another issue, there's a beautiful tree right there. I think that, even if we could get, even if sixteen feet was accepted, and even if. I just, I don't know, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't have any, I appreciate, that's why we're here to talk about it, and appreciate it, just, it's complicated.
Yes, it is.
Everything's complicated, it is, it's a big puzzle, and I, and I'm a stubborn bugger. I'm trying to figure out something that makes sense, I've got all this beautiful way, and I want to keep it that way. It makes sense to keep that way, just don't know how to get there.
When you bought the property, was it just a one family? Was there, was there two dwellings when you?
It was exactly in this configured, exactly that footprint that we're looking at was there. It was just this, at the time, this barn dwelling unit. Some, the former owner had a caretaker that stayed in the top third floor of this building. They had water and a little bit electric and stuff, but it was a mess, it was a god-awful mess. The, the backside, I mean, it was just, it was all off, there was no back. There's flapping tars, and there were several buildings on the property that were.
It was abandoned, should have been.
It was a mess.
Farm dwellings.
They had actually, the house that was there, they had done, renovated the kitchen, not that long, but there was.
There was a lot of.
There was a hole in the roof, you know, it was a mess.
Sounds like you put a lot into this, you know, the whole.
We have, and we probably should have addressed this better, but it seemed like we were moving, we, the town were moving in. There were, there were multiple places in the town of Newbury where you had more than one dwelling on the same lot. We still have that. And this bylaw language, the zoning bylaw, addresses that. And of course, we have to be the, the exception, we're, it's more to new, you know, to build a thousand-square-foot in-law or rental unit, to address that issue, you know, it's a little quirky when you have a bigger structure with a unit inside it. We can solve that, but that'll keep those two things right there. And as I said, for us, we at least want to explore this idea, because for us, this would be great, for us personally. And it might, and it might have solved, had there not been several issues, it might have solved two dwelling issue too. Just serendipitously, that would be solved in accord, in concurrence with the two lots. But that zoning issue, the non-conformity is an issue, it's not going to go away, I don't think. Unless I push the house back.
You could push the house back.
Actually, could that be done?
Could be, physically it could be done.
Were there skating problems? Instead of moving one building, you had to move two.
Right, there's still the issue of the non-conforming of the two, you know, two structures, dwelling structures on one. So I think another issue is to use the carriage house as an accessory apartment, it all needs to be on one septic system and have one electric system, right, they all have to be on a shared system, so.
Correct, exactly, we want it to be everything, utilities combined, electric, and septic, exactly. That's why we were, we personally favored that, to that.
So what, what exactly have you got for the ZBA at this point, looking for variance or?
We are looking for a variance for a one-thousand-square-foot accessory use, detached accessory use.
But then you're going to have to, again, kept them both in the same septic system and electric apparently? Your septic system designed for that?
There's a question, haven't addressed it yet. We do have excess capacity in this system, this is tied into that right now. It's possible that this could be sufficient for a one-bed condition.
I think you need more than that.
I'm sorry?
You need more than that, more than one bed. For, for the carriage house, you need?
No, we've got, we've got, we've got a four-bedroom, we've got a five, we've got a four-bedroom system that's built, Title V, that's good, for this four-bedroom home. But if you add another bedroom, you need five bedrooms, and a hundred and ten gallons per day is five fifty would be the requirement. We're designed for five-twenty-six, we're about twenty-five gallons short, which could be dealt with potentially. We haven't gone down that road, because we do toward off, and got off of that road to get on this road. We're kind of ping ponging around, to be honest with you.
We're between two different scenarios right now.
We are.
You have to figure out which one you want to do, I think.
Or which is doable, to be honest with you. And that's the important, this meeting is very helpful to us, and we appreciate it, thank you for your time. Because, you know, you can get down a road, and all of a sudden, you're neck-deep in engineering and everything, and.
Because for the existing, I have this right, for the existing apartment to even float right now, it has to be tied in.
Right.
So you, you either have to do that, or think about doing something different, if you want to go down all the hurdles of your meeting with that.
We, we put the accessory unit on hold, detached accessory, I, I believe we can solve that problem. There aren't any real problems there, it's just, the greatest issue there to overcome is not the septic, although it is an issue, we can overcome that through design and build. The electric is the same, gas and utilities and whatnot. It's serviced by one gas line and one water line right now, so we're in good shape that way. But we have to address the big, the little guy within the big issue, and that's.
The popper in the garage.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, well, you also have the issue that if, if you go that route, you're not going to be able to sell one, because the owner has to live in one of the others, isn't it?
That's correct.
No, it's one property at that point.
Right.
But the owner, right, 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 at that point, but.
You can't sell it, you can't.
Yeah, but you won't be able to sell off one of the buildings if you.
No, no, it's one property at that, that's it, I mean.
So that kind of, that's kind of a big, a big deal.
Well, that's what I meant about us being selfish, I don't want, I want to be honest with the board, you know, selfishly, we would like to, I mean, we have previously looked at larger development, we're just not capable, per se, of doing it. I mean, it's possible an OSRD could be done here for, this is all buildable, good length. We're not going to do it, and we don't want to do it. We just don't, we would love to do that, but we're learning about it, we're, we're learning about the problems that that creates, you know? Again, we appreciate the time, we appreciate the power, because it helps us, you know?
Martha, do you think it's doable?
It's that furniture, that non-conformity that's a problem, beyond even solving these things.
I think it's, it almost has to be a combination of a subdivision and a common driveway. I think, looking at it, as I said in my email to you, the request was for a thirty-foot right-of-way, which I think is, is really pushing it on the narrow side, the forty feet that were shown on the plan doesn't work, because you don't get the set, side yard setback.
We run into a non-conformity.
Right, you're creating, you're actually creating one there if you do that. You know, whether you could actually do, let's say, a thirty-five-foot right-of-way, and, you know, get a roadway width, which will be acceptable to. You know, whether you could actually do it with, say, a thirty-five foot right of way, and, you know, get a roadway width, which will be acceptable to, you know, the fire department for public safety. Thirteen feet, I think we'll not, probably not cut it, not, as Larry said, that doesn't even meet our minimum common driveway width requirements. We do have, the board over the last twelve years has approved a couple of small sub, two lot subdivisions, which I mentioned to you. One was the Hawk Haven Way off of Old Rally Road, and the other one was Perkins Way. Old Rally actually had a fifty foot right of way, they kept that, but the roadway was twenty feet. There was an existing six foot driveway, which was widened by, by four feet, and it was gravelled, but really beefed up in terms of the, you know, the sub... Sublayer. Perkins was a forty foot right of way with an eighteen foot roadway.
Is Perkins one, like, right down from us?
Yeah, we're Bob Catterino.
Right, right, right.
Yeah.
That was forty foot?
That was a forty foot. So, I haven't seen any that were, recently anyway, that were smaller than forty feet, but...
And I, I think it would, it would be different, be reluctant to set a precedent where, you know, we could even meet common driveway, you know?
And having your septic vent right there, sort of right in the middle of the right of way that you create, I mean, without having an as-built of your septic system... It would be easier to kind of get a sense of what options you would have with the roadway.
Right. Well, as I said, the sixteen, sixteen would be right there, I, I'll be honest with you.
More than that.
Sixteen foot actual built. More than that would be pushing it, it, it just probably would not be a prudent thing to do, with regard to the septic that's existing. You got, you're right there at about sixteen feet. Thirteen is, is wiggle room, about three feet, three and a half, three and a quarter feet, but sixteen, it's close. And you gotta deal with this big ash tree that's out here, I think that's where they, that would be within the sixteen feet, I think. Without measuring it, there's a big, beautiful ash tree right at the corner. I'm gonna honestly say it's about fifteen feet off the property line. And I'd be shabby making it go away, I don't even know if I can make it go away, 'cause it's in the state.
On the town right away.
It's in the right of way.
Yeah, it's in the town, state, whoever owns that, it's not my property, it's the bottom line.
State right of way.
So I don't know, I, I can't, I have no right to touch that tree. I don't want to anyway, but even if I wanted to, I can't. It's their tree, not mine. It's a good tree, it's a big guy, I don't know, he wasn't a few left, but...
So back to my original question, Mark.
I think it's borderline.
Her direction is very, very important here.
Well, it's, you know...
It's a pain, it's a pain.
We've talked about it, yeah.
That's a terrible thing for me, 'cause I'm an optimist, I'm a, you know, I'll try, try, try.
We've talked about it a few times.
I'm like a mosquito that doesn't go away.
And that was, I had advised them to, to talk to an engineer, to see, you know, what actually could be laid out there that would be workable. And this isn't quite developed enough to have actually kind of sorted out all the issues that there are, it's, it's...
There are a lot, aren't there?
There are a lot.
Yeah, yeah, but it, I mean, as far, as far as the, the setback nonconformity goes, that's ultimately gonna be a ZVA decision, you know, not ours. And, you know, I mean, the, the path for that is pretty straightforward, you know, you know what you need to do. The rest of it seems to me is just engineering, and, I mean, ultimately, yeah, speaking, I mean, I, I think we'd like to help you, but you just have a lot of issues, you know? And then, we, we have to be, I mean, we have to be concerned with safety, and that's absolute, you know? And I, I know that this is not gonna fly, okay? And I have, I understand that the fire department won't even allow hammerhead turns now, is that...
They don't, they don't anymore, so...
And, which basically means, I don't know, building out that whole cul-de-sac, I guess.
Or at least some minimal, what they allowed is, is, you know, doing a hardened island or something that they can drive over, but they need to be able to stack their fire trucks, they wanna be able to have their fire trucks. They don't wanna have a fire truck have to go all the way in there and then back out, they want the trucks to be able to turn around, two trucks pass each other with their leers out, which really gets us to the twenty-two feet that we have in our subdivision rules, which is for the width. And getting down to thirteen feet for something that's essentially serving as a common driveway, I think is not gonna, not gonna go.
As far as the impact on the septic system, so I guess you're gonna...
Not to mention it's setting impressive, we don't wanna do, potentially.
Well, that, that's, yeah.
I mean, each thing's case by case.
No, 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 I was gonna say, probably, I don't know if the Board of Health is gonna have any issues with the septic system, you know, with all this going on. Because eventually, you know, if it's subdivision control, it gets sent out to the Board of Health and other boards, you know, for review, and, I don't know.
And you also have to take into account stormwater management, you know, it's country drainage, so you've gotta make sure that you've got room for swales, or, you know, whatever, whatever you're gonna need to do.
And for me to swell, that's a problem.
But, my own feeling is that, you, you gotta make a decision which way you wanna go. If, if you, if you wanna sell that lot, and I don't blame you for wanting to do it, then subdivision control is the way you're gonna have to go, I think. But, in order to make an intelligent decision on whether or not it's worth pursuing, I think you really do need to sit down with an engineer, and talk about all the issues that, you know, we've, we've talked about here tonight. I guess, bring your engineer back to another meeting, if you, if you want, you know? But that's, you're gonna have to make that, that basic decision, which, which direction you wanna go.
Thank you very much for your time, everybody, really appreciate it, truly, thank you.
Well, you've obviously put a lot of time and effort into this, and, you know, the property, and, and money, I think.
You do. It's fine, it's challenging, but it'd be nice to catch a break once in a while, too, to be honest with you. This one's a tough one. What bothers me, to be honest with you, if I may speak extraordinarily frankly...
Please.
I'm not trying, we're really honest to God, God is my witness, I got, I got this beautiful, big piece of property, and I can't make sense of it. I don't wanna develop it as a developer and do all this stuff, we've talked about that a couple of years ago. I mean, I mean, another, the people who were before you, for example, those are developers, they're gonna come in, they're gonna push the envelope, you know, extra units, OSRD, that, that... When I first talked to Martha, I'm such an optimist, I was like, can we do it under OSRD and just do two lots? Because we, but we can't, because we need...
Well, it doesn't, doesn't fit, doesn't fit into that and what the SEPA did.
We actually met with another engineer, I brought it up with Martha, um, we met with Cam, an engineer, as an option, because we tasked out to find an engineer capable of guiding us through that. And we ended up with two, that we were just, that we decided, Cam, an engineer in Amesbury, and another fellow, Al, Al Galli, in Lexington, who seems perfect, but... Cam had suggested something eighty-one L, Martha, as an option to this, he actually is, that's what he's advising us to do, and I don't necessarily agree with that. I don't know how to, are we, the eighty-one Ls?
So that's, that's an exception under, it's in the definitions of subdivision, so if you have a lot with, with two structures which predate zoning, you can divide that into two with one structure on each lot. The problem is you end up with two nonconforming lots, that in itself, that that would be allowed, but as soon as you start doing anything to either of the structures, if you wanna expand them or something, they're nonconforming, and then you get into issues.
And they've already done that. That you've, you've already made substantial modifications to one of those buildings anyway.
True, but the footprint was maintained, so...
I was just gonna say, does it matter if it doesn't go beyond the footprint, then it might, you know?
But if they want...
We did a lot of them in this, back in the day. Yeah, there were, you know, so, I shouldn't say...
This thing, the eighty-one L thing?
Yeah.
What, were there multiple dwellings on this, more of a lot?
Usually it was just two buildings on a lot, and they figured out that they could make them into two lots.
Is that right?
I mean, and they were nonconforming for sure, but they had enough access that it was, it was a lot.
But, but you're confined to the original footprint.
You're confined to the original footprint, so if you wanted to then do that, move the barn, the carriage house back, then I think you'd get into trouble.
Then you blow it. Yeah, when the losing...
The original location and the footprint, I mean, where it is right now, right?
So I think that, that, that solution still doesn't get you to where, where you wanna go.
Right, right, and... I don't wanna, I don't wanna create turmoil and ask them for something, it either works or it doesn't. And that's what, I guess, is short circuiting me a little bit, because I can't, like, I like, I, I conceptually like the idea, you got these two things that have always been here, I just wanna put them over there, how do I get, do that? I just didn't figure out what to do, is the problem.
Well, I mean, I don't think you have a lot of wiggle room, but your main problem is the access, and it's the width of your road in. So it's, you know, talking to your engineers as to what's the max, max they can give you for a, a right of way, given the location of your septic system.
Pay attention to my property from his neighbor.
Well, that was what he was talking about, where it was a bad spot.
Yeah. Significant amount, get far away from, yeah, get them far away from your septic system, and, you know, get, whatever you need, your fifty feet by, purchasing that from your neighbor and just...
Oh, yeah.
Or swap these.
Or swap, however you get it, and, you know, there is... I mean, in order to grant a waiver, any waiver, we're, we're supposed to be able to make the finding that it's in the public interest, and especially when you're talking about such a narrow access, I mean, with public safety in mind, not only, but that also improved the first responders' safety as well, you know, you gotta be careful, you know?
Sure, sure. Well, I'm gonna let you get on with your business, I don't wanna take any more time, you're gracious enough to discuss this.
You're welcome. Question, on your septic system, is it brand new? When did you put the septic system in?
No, we inherited it, so it's at least twelve years old. Thought, what do you think, what were you thinking?
No, just wondering, and this is, you know, if it's twelve years old, I don't know if you've had it tested.
Yes, I did, but...
Okay, so it's passed, it passes common fire right now.
It's title five.
You might be in a...
Yeah, if you were to relocate a septic system, that could give you some wiggle in there, at least.
Well, that, yeah, assuming you move the barn, which has a lot of room.
Right. But you still have to get a substantial waiver on the right of way, I think you're looking at something like thirty-five feet max to get the setback that you need for the side yard. But if you can still get the road, you know, decent roadway width in there, and deal with stormwater and stuff, maybe it's doable, but that's where you really need to, to talk to your engineer, and get deeper into it with him than you did with what you presented tonight, I think.
Sure, sure, actually, your septic idea is not, is not off the mark, because it put, what, twenty-five years, maybe thirty years?
Depends, yeah.
You might be halfway through with longevity, but that's just anyways.
Well, the good news is, the soils are perfect, all of this is really well-drained, perished.
Right, 'cause you said you did, you did some per test right back.
Yes, it shows on that plan, I did some tests, it should show, I don't know...
Yes, I do, they're right here.
We just tested the soils to make sure that everything was good. It is. So, it, it, logistically, it's, it's possible.
So I'm just, you know, throwing things out, if you're sort of thinking about...
That'd be cheaper than the last one, too.
Maybe.
Pardon me, that'd be cheaper than the last one.
Monopoly, it's like a board game. I love a challenge, but this one's a tough one, I gotta be honest with you. I just wanna helicopter him up and drop him right over there. Can't do that in the world we live today. Thank you for coming, it's, well, thank you, we'll, I mean, I'm inclined, we'd love to pursue this, and we probably will, and we will develop this to a better level, I apologize, my apologies, we just wanted to get in, to just conceptually talk about this, to get some comfort and, just a little bit of direction on where to go, where to go. Even on that eighty-one L thing, well, it helps us to, you know, when we sign contracts with engineers, and all of a sudden, you're out getting active, it's five thousand, ten thousand, just keeps going, to be honest with you. Always quickly.
We'll get differing opinions from different people.
Yeah, and it's like, I mean, I'll share with you, off, off the record, if I may, I mean, you're, we're sitting with, on a...
You're being recorded.
No, it's fine, I'm, I'm, well, when I say off the record, I mean... In other words, you get answers, but you get more misinformation and misdirection than you get solid answers, sometimes sitting as a client interviewing people.
Or you get more questions.
Let's see how far we can get, mate.
Thank you, board, thank you very much.
Good luck.
Someone? Please, um, I guess, um, I'm remembering when you might be having another meeting with Maggie, um, certainly, our...
Yeah, she's got, I wanted to send a note through today, she's, Tuesday, Monday, do you wanna set some...
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions, just, you know, going through the Attorney General site for the most recent, apparently, wireless bylaws, part of the two, the Medway and the Reading comes up.
Thank you, everybody, really, thank you, everybody.
Take care.
How you doing?
Bracing.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody, happy new year.
So those are, that's why I went to the Medway and, and Reading, those are the most recent Readings, was two thousand sixteen, and Medway was in eighteen. They both go about, about it a little bit differently, but they both address the current spectrum act that they, what is what they call it, which means, anybody that comes in for a modification to an existing site, you have to basically let them do it, either by special permit, or you wanna let them do it, but you can't deny it. So, there's a couple of different ways of doing it. I think I had showed, Martha's shared with her some language from the Medway, where they had a co-location or a modification, as they call it, request, could be approved by the building inspector. I don't think we necessarily have to go that route, we could just use the language to reference the correct act, and tell them they still need a special permit, so, I mean, that sort of thing. The other thing, though, is going over our wireless overlay, is it's like way overkill, you know, so, you know, it asks for all sorts of, uh, engineering and radio frequency reports, and energy, put out reports at this level and that level, and all sorts of things that nobody else asked for.
Plus the nine hundred foot of others.
It plus the nine hundred foot, that nobody else asked for, and in fact, the other, the ones that I've looked at, which are only those two, they don't have a specific, other than the height of the tower, it's usually one and a half times the vertical height of the tower is the distance that, that you can be between that and the building. However, the setbacks are generally, whatever the zoning setback is, in the district, for the towers. When you get into smaller things, I think it's, uh, I think it was, Medway has a list of... equipment that can go on buildings or on coals or on things that you can do by right, but still you need a permit, but it's only when you get into the larger tower things that they, they start to get more, more specific and detailed than the requirements, so. You know, just, I could, again, you know, if we wanna just reference the Spectrum Act so that we're somewhat currently can do that, I would suggest, and I also, that's one of my questions for Lisa, and it's probably one that you run into, I have a hard time getting my head around the buffer if it's, or the setback if it's a property line to property line. Cause that's like saying that you're, you've gotta have a three hundred or nine hundred or whatever hundred foot property that is between the proposed site and whatever you're protecting. And that just seems, I can't get there. But, yeah, exactly. But that ended up, and that came, that came up actually in marijuana buffer. But they're talking, you know, the buffer is three hundred foot, but it's property line to property line. It's not, you know, structure to property line, or property line to other structure or some sort of thing that way, it, it just seems goofy to me, it doesn't sound like it's right. So it's one of my questions for, for Lisa.
So property between the properties.
Well, that's what's happening, I think, in the marijuana on residential side.
That would be the implication, right, right.
Yeah, it, it would seem property line to property line is the way, is probably the proper interpretation whether that's the best way, you know, for it to go. I don't know, but to, to get back to your point, isn't there a term they use, fall zone?
Yeah, it's a fall, fall zone, sometimes it's like one and a half times the fall zone or whatever.
Yeah, that's, that's the, the vertical height of the tower.
So, let's say, does that necessarily? I know what I'm gonna say, I just can't find the way to say it. You, you, you could, you could have, I don't know, let's say your fall zone is nine hundred feet. Maybe that's absurd, I don't know, maybe not. So, and, but your, your property setback is three hundred feet. Presumably, if that's the right interpretation, you could put the tower up as long as there was not a structure on a budding property within that, that nine hundred feet. But then, of course, if they put a structure up there, are you grandfathered, I don't know.
I think you are, I mean, we had that discussion with regard to marijuana. Say if you had a marijuana facility in place and then a nursery school or a kindergarten wanted to locate within that thousand, they're aware that that's there, so it's not, doesn't have a negative impact on the marijuana facility.
Cause they're essentially grandfathered.
They're essentially grandfathered at that point, yeah.
Yeah, the difference in our wireless, you know, the nine hundred feet is literally a nine hundred feet setback.
From, from property line to property line?
No, in this case, it would have been be from the tower to, to the property line. But even that's.
Oh, I see, you would have to have, your property would have to be nine hundred feet wide, or eighteen hundred feet.
Eighteen hundred feet wide, right.
I'll remember that.
And then, you know, obviously, you're not gonna have a nine hundred foot tower, so you don't have to worry about the.
What, what they did with that wind tower over in the industrial park in Newportport, that certainly doesn't have, well, the structures around it certainly don't are well within the fall zone.
Right.
As part of that.
Right, and I don't know at the point that they're zoning to see what their requirements are.
The other towns did still have the, you know, one and a half times the vertical height for the fall zone. But you, you know, I can say that just so you don't land on somebody's structure.
Right.
But aside from that, if there weren't these structures within that, you know, you were just only subject to whatever the existing setback is. Which seems a little more reasonable. So, I mean, that's the sort of thing, like, you know, we can just get rid of the nine hundred feet and maybe add, you know, a paragraph that makes it compliant with the most recent communications act.
Yeah, I mean, we should at least bring it into compliance, but if it's way over the top in other ways, I mean.
It is kind of over the top.
I almost think that there are like a model bylaws or something that, I don't know who would put out, Mass Municipal Lawyers Association or.
Yeah, I don't know.
Isn't that what the town, city and town council? You know what I'm saying?
I do, and they've, they've done that for so.
City Solicitors and Town Council Association, I think they changed their name now, right? The Mass Municipal.
Planning agencies.
Lawyers, I don't know. Or you are, or even, you know, some of the planning agencies would have some model bylaws.
There's the other thing I could do is put a, I haven't done this, put a query out on the Mass Planners List serve to see if anybody has current, current wireless communications bylaws that they think are.
Plagiarism is always a.
Absolutely.
A valuable tool.
There's no sense in reinventing the wheel.
That's right.
As long as you look at it critically and take out anything that really doesn't apply.
I mean, Reading has a lot more detail on theirs, they have like four, four different preferred locations, but what do you read them, you know, but preferred number one, two, three, before you can even come out and what, you know, a proposal for a new town, so. They have, they have lots of things. Although, once you get, if you can get past all those, then you can put up, you know, equipment anywhere in the town as long as you can prove that there's a need.
I think the big question really is a co-location or modification, you know, whether, whether the board feels it's appropriate. Right now, they still have to go through the special permit hearing, it's like they're starting from scratch, even if they just wanna add one antenna. And is that really an appropriate thing to ask an applicant to do, or is there some less rigorous process?
Intuitively, it would seem like it should be a simpler process. If the tower's already there and you met all the other requirements.
Yeah.
I would, I would agree.
Unless they beam in gamma waves, waves that people or something are running public.
Right.
Well, that's why Medway.
Be a little facetious.
Medway goes to the building department. Reading says, no, you need a special permit. Still, I mean, I, I don't know if it's, I haven't gotten into it, I don't know if it's an abbreviated process, but it's still, you kind of come, go before the same board and see, get permission, get a permit.
I mean, we haven't touched this bylaw in seventeen years, it's probably not really time.
Yeah, so it would just be good to get some, some guidance on. You know, from Lisa for which way to go. For all I know, those two kids who did the latest doesn't mean they're the best, so. Maybe she has another one.
The technology changes so fast.
Although, they did seem to be addressing that, because they, they do address equipment that's, you know, could be on a building or can be on other existing structures as opposed to putting up a big tower. So they did address that, and some of that in, I think probably in both, no, I remember it was Medway, is by right. So.
I'll put that request in, you wanna talk to her specifically about that, or are there other things that you wanna invite her as well?
That's kind of my big, cause I really haven't gotten into, well, I think the, the question about the property line to property line thing, which would affect, I, you know, I just don't know how that got written in, that just bothers me.
It just seems, you know, I haven't had a chance to check back at the C C regulations, C C regulations, cause I think that's where they, where they ended up.
Well, maybe I'm just not understanding the term, I mean, I just.
I looked for something in there, I couldn't find it.
Might have been, I think there was some, some additional language. There was a whole website that was kind of devoted to it, so I'll see if that's still active, I'll send that to you.
Yeah, the only thing I found, and maybe there's more, I'm sure there's more out there, but the only thing I found was just some generic language in there, right, it's about complying with local zoning bylaws. You know, it was very general, very nonspecific. And I don't know why the C C C would want to mandate zoning setbacks for a local municipality, why they wouldn't just leave it to the local municipality to determine. There's a lot I don't understand.
I guess they probably had to do something, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't even remember, I'm just trying to think back, I went to a that meeting in Amesbury with the.
From Amesbury, the transportation center.
With the C C C or one of the commissioners, so I don't remember them getting into that sort of specific little setbacks or anything.
To talk about it, so I went to a, the C P T C conference last March, and there was a session on it. It wasn't the March before, I don't remember now. And they did talk about that, but they made some modifications to their opinions after that.
I wonder if they have, well, they must have staff attorneys, I wonder if someone will even just call, you know, get some direction on it.
Yeah, who was it, Kay Doyle, I think was the person who spoke, and I do have her card.
Well, there's gotta be a certain amount of leeway, cause you have urban situations versus non-urban situations, so obviously, the setbacks are going to be different.
Right, right, it wouldn't, it's gonna work for Newbury, or West Newbury, it's necessarily gonna work for Springfield. Vice versa.
Right. And I think for us, because our, our business in Light Industrial District is relatively small and it follows the property boundaries, basically, we just, we don't have places where, say you've got a property and then you've got some other commercial properties before you hit the sensitive receptors, they're just kind of right there next to each other.
Exactly.
So that's where the property line to property line gets difficult.
And it was, it's also permitted in the C H district too, when a special permit is not.
Retail is not, but growing cultivation, processing and testing is allowed there. But to a certain degree, it's the same issue because it's surrounded by residential properties. And a lot of the parcels actually within that district are residential. So we should really take a look at both. But the retail is, is the more sensitive issue.
Okay, I mean, it seemed to me, this is actually what I wanted to talk to you about, but I'm gonna just throw it out there now, is, I mean, you seem to have, have a pretty good handle on it, Martha. I mean, one suggestion being that we simply reduce, I guess we need to determine whether it's property line to property line setbacks, but just reduce those, you know, setback areas. The other, the other thought I had was the C H district, that you've touched on that. And there's language in the medical marijuana bylaw that permits the planning board to reduce the setback area if there's a showing that there's no other available location in the district. And I wonder if that might be something we could think about incorporating into the, into the retail.
That's, that's already in place.
It, it's in for the medical marijuana, but not for the retail.
Yeah, and not the.
Didn't, I know, didn't keep all that.
That would, that would, that would make sense, I think, and kind of tie in with discussions that we had with council.
Yeah, so I mean, that might be another way to think of it.
No, that's a good thought. So it's plenty more discretion, really, yeah.
Yeah, if I understand how the, how the, likely the medical marijuana bylaw reads is if the applicant can show that there is no practical location within the district and the planning board can reduce the setback up to fifty percent. I don't know if fifty percent is necessarily the right number, but, you know, the point is it's a mechanism where they can come forward and, and look for relief.
And I think that would certainly work for the, the daycare, the school issue, doesn't for the residential properties which are immediately adjacent.
Yeah, but the other, the other suggestion you had in your email, which I think is a good one, is you could also make exceptions with, and I forget the term you used, but if there's wetlands or.
Right, right.
A highway.
Right, state highway, water body, wetlands or something separating, cause obviously, you're not gonna cross that easily.
Right.
Not gonna have to always really cross the street.
No, together. Their joints.
So I think, hopefully, we can craft something. But I think that language about discretion and reducing is also, that would be a good provision to carry over.
Yeah. Well, it's, it's simple, you know, it'd be simple enough just to, just to remember by law to rule that language. You talk to town council, it doesn't, it's, you know, would, would be appropriate.
Yeah, that's good, I'll check that, I haven't looked at, at medical for a while.
But yeah, like I say, if, you know, we, we could get a half hour between now and that workshop, I'd love to do it.
Sounds good. How about you? You have any insights? Any, any information to share? Any thoughts?
Sailing nose for crying.
Kind of surprises.
Pulling together a bunch of stuff to, to give you guys. This thing from, from Berkshire, actually, I think it'd be very helpful in terms of help mining. It's not one for one for our procedures, but it's, it's, I think it's a good starting point, so.
If anything's electronic, feel free to.
I, I can scan it all ahead of time if you.
Oh, no, no, don't scan it.
Just send it.
Just don't print it out if it's like, no, no, don't, don't go to scan, or no. An offer, to save time on copying, if that's helpful.
Yeah, actually, some of them, some of them I did pull off. It was on the internet, but I don't know if I can.
Whatever is easiest to get is all I was trying to suggest, not to redo it. Do what you already done, thank you.
All right, anything else, wanna go to the yard?
Well, I'm looking through. I was thinking that, right?
Really? All in favor?